Probably no word. What's the word? These are punk meetings. I'd sent Brenna some edits. From those. And all those. Questions on those if you guys have time to do those? Got any questions, Councilman? That meeting?
Within a minute, minutes here, I looked up where we uh, where we took the vote to uh, relating to PAF of the rest of the town that we can, we can have a vote on that.
I think that would align smart group.
That was, that was the termination contract. Realize that was one step and then we realized that we followed that path.
We had to do the notice first.
Right. And all that, yeah. And then they back, got back, so it canceled that termination. So that wasn't it. So now what we're doing, or what is recommended, we really need to discuss is the way we're going to, number one, I think we all agree we want to get out of this contract. Okay. So number two is Matt gave us two avenues to do this in JTL.
Uh, you did, yeah. I think they were in favor of a deductive change order.
Deductive change order. That seems to give us less risk.
Know your opinion.
But that means that they're gone.
It means that they still have to finish the work in phase one. If we do it the other way, it chops them off and we lose.
So how much more work is it on phase one?
Um, that's a great question. I don't, they're, they're not much because we got that change, that um, payout this week.
Right.
For, for thirty-eight hundred dollars. Something like that, wasn't much, but they said, and I asked them, I said, so you, you're quite, clarify this is done. So the only thing left is some retainage, basically. And, and I guess if you look at the um, at the payout, there's twenty-three thousand dollars I think left in retainage. If I was to look at that, I think that we were a little problematic. So I guess that finalizes when everything is accomplished, that, because they were, there's, there's part of it they get once they immobilize. And that means they're going to lose everything from the side. They immobilization, they, they had to pay, get paid so much and then so much more after they get out of the way. And then I guess some of the other testing and call up, I don't know, honestly. I don't know, but, but they do have an extensive punch list. I'd sent that out. If you're backing buddy, if like, thought there was anything else problematic with that, but uh, and I guess as soon as the weather break a little bit, they're supposed to be out here making this week, looking some on that.
And so I, I didn't realize until I saw the JTL email, so they still have to do some like strawling and, and reseeding its properties?
I would assume that, and that would be, since it's going to be in spring now.
Okay.
If they straw and reseeded it, I think we should hope to mother that. And we have retainage.
Yeah, that definitely gives them some leverage and incentive to, to do the repair work.
And they say, oh, from that, we just talked to, probably have to do it.
Exactly.
But that was his, that was their recommendation. So it was the deductive change. The other one was the.
The termination convenience.
Both of them are in general conditions clause, re, there's pros and cons to both of them. You know, the cons, there are risks or, or things we have to do to make it happen. It just affects JTL too, but the, the money involved as well. Uh, because they're, they're part of that change order. But I mean, they understand that it's still part of the drive going forward. So do we have the ability to deny? Make that change and accept that work for the operation.
Would I, if, if there's a consensus, um, I, I'd recommend a motion be made to authorize a deductive change order subject to legal review. Um, I, I think that JTL is probably going to be the ones, if it's a change order, I imagine they're probably going to be the ones that actually prepare it. So if we go ahead and approve it subject to legal review, um, then we don't have to wait till January, uh, to send that to them.
Send it out.
Yeah.
We get up until our time for the sewer project to be made, we can function, we can call for that motion.
Okay.
Hope you those. Thank you for the October twenty-three. That was a very extensive minute. Uh, approval claims, this way.
Um, I gave you the list of um, what we had. Some of them, it's a little bit extra this month only because some of the bills that would have normally been paid in December because we met a week earlier, they fell into this month's um, approval. Um, but then we did have a few callouts. We have um, the PAF payment, which was like seventy-two thousand. We had a ready payment. We had our final twenty, twenty, twenty-five contract payments in the fire department. And then we had the twenty-four thousand dollars ten-four ten-four for all paid. Those are just some of the bigger ones, because everything else is pretty much in line with our normal monthly expenses.
Guess the deal.
Yeah. Yeah, it was only, ended up being like forty-seven thousand for like actual, like, monthly stuff. But again, you know, like we didn't have Cross Ground Todd's invoices from last month, so they got a double whammy this mon, I mean, it's just because we met a whole week early. We get a lot of invoices that last week before our town council meeting, so they, they fell into this month's meeting.
I have no further questions, you guys.
That question doesn't count. We're still, I'm still working on that. I think it's just a key here, but I am working with um, them. Um, but I think we got everything else. That's the only thing that, and it's just, I think it's just the way that it is put in here, but we are working on it. You've exceeded next year's budget as well.
Three inches involved a little bit. Jerry will be here tonight, everybody knows that. It came in about what we thought, and at least it's about five grand per audit. He gave me a couple pieces of paper on insurance.
Okay.
That basically shows you when you get them to audit. And it was more payroll and sewer.
Which would make sense because we had time.
Right, right. Than, than we had. And less it went into the town roads. What that does is that changes because of three dollars per hundred. You know about what we're comping pay per hundred dollars salary? So it's three dollars per hundred less for them to work in the sewer department as it is to work on the streets. So changing that code alone helps us. And we're not hiding anything.
Right.
We know that virtue of being more sewer treatment plant.
Right.
Then they are on roads.
Yeah.
So that's a savings. So I'll show you where he showed me how that he kept it. Did you get the five hundred dollar check?
I just, it came in the mail. Well, it was in with the mail, but I picked up last night. So yes, I do have it. I didn't open it, so I don't know if it confirms five hundred, but yes, I do have the, the check in there.
Any other questions on your competition? What's on your Christmas list? I've always been reading. Um, for Johnsons?
There's only one. It was a lead for Tom Wright. So, and I mean, it needs to, it needs the approval.
I don't think he'll lay here.
Go ahead and see the report. And then uh, please learn it. Oh, is that right? For the ninety-seven on fire arms and ninety-four on triple long. Don't tell me any visitor at the fore, so that's not.
Awesome. I bring this to three, because I see Dogg is out.
Yep.
Cool.
Is that the same check D when some of the Charles County Council?
Yep, Mr. Beard.
Oh, cool. Yeah, I know.
Yeah, so it will be, again, I told him six thirty, right, that, that will be the pledge, we do it. Works for me. Anything to point out otherwise, no, uh, no arrests this month.
Hey, that's good.
With uh, crashes and everything else, I said crashes were down, but they will be for this month then. They're already down about four or five. Want to date the bill first? Uh, I think so, you're trying to remember. That was thirty. All her friends, I mean, well, she's the one I talked about, she had a record.
Oh.
Well, I did not work that.
Okay.
I don't. Or part camper.
Ah.
Hard fire, so uh, yeah.
Didn't that put her somewhere in her remote?
She's back.
Okay.
So she's safe in the water. I, I didn't know if you had worked that or not, but she said she lost it in the corner. Call it out.
Okay.
Um, Jill Sagester emailed me and texted me this afternoon that the first meeting of the sewer project up on the top of the hill is December eighteenth at one PM for whoever wants to go. Then. Yes, at one PM. I can forward the invite.
That is the same power, same. But I would encourage somebody to go.
Yep, so. And then uh, the cops grant. Faith and I've done the next step that you have to do within forty-five days, and that's to register with ASAP.gov and with the US Treasury Department. We've got that all set up. So now we're waiting for the next step. And that would be to receive the funding. And then also the JAG grant. We know that that's going to be coming around next year sometime, but we don't know when. But that's a hundred percent pay. Christmas party tomorrow at sign at seven PM. JTL's Christmas party for us, or to meet with them is uh, December seventeenth at six thirty PM. I don't know where yet. Okay.
Is that, who often go with a plus one?
If you're doing a plus one, let me know, because I had sent just a plus one for Steve. Because you had said that it'd just be you, but if you want a plus one, you can have a. Okay. I can change it. Um, town signage. This is, Steve wanted something with a strawberry at the top of it or something, so they came back with this.
I don't, and I put that in communication. I want everybody to interpret. Matt, we talked about maybe another two strawberry, but I like it better. But because the color bit matches the rest of the peel, or the, or the logo well.
Well, if we're going towards, leaning towards the school, then that, that's what it does, so.
So, just to clarify, you saying strawberry kind of like get back closer to the school?
Yeah, just because of Borden Berries Strawberry Fest, I mean Strawberry Festival, but like Borden Berries, but the red color. If you're not going to go with the town logo and have like blue backgrounds to match our town logo, then you would go with whatever matches a school.
Well, of course strawberry is a heritage more than this is school logo.
Right.
It's a heritage of the town. That was the reason they thought it was great for them not to. But I, I'm open to suggestions, and when I made my comment, I wanted to hear everybody else's input. But I, I don't think anybody would do anything, so. I, I like it. I like it. I think it gives us some flexibility.
Everybody else, that, man, you are. What, what would you like to do?
I, I don't, I don't care to talk about that.
Volume?
Yeah, I don't like the volume. I just don't.
What did, what did you have?
I don't know. I just don't like it.
With the, with the team, with the teams and the years?
Yes, I don't like it. Whatever.
Maybe different? Different?
I say different, but I don't know exactly what I want. But it's fine. I mean, and I'm going to hear bitching about, like you wouldn't believe, I'm going to be bitched at because of this son.
You know what?
Huge time. Yes. But that's okay.
Some Brandy on Facebook.
It ain't, it ain't Brandy I'm talking about. It's her daughter. Little Emma. Yeah.
Uh, well, I mean, this is, Brenna's been working on this for some time, and I think that we just, if, if there's, the whole thing we have to remember is, we're trying to highlight it's our town sign. We're just adding school information about. Not fair.
Yeah, well, that's why I mean, like, if we're going to take the town logo away, you know.
This sign's only nearly twelve foot wide.
Well, it, this is like six by, six by ten, they said, without creating a sale, they suggest six by ten.
So I have the same thing.
So, that's going to be pretty big.
It's going to be large. Could you, could you clarify maybe the, the height of those letters? I mean, that may clarify for her. You know, does that boys basketball, like a six inch letter or?
Okay.
Uh. Is that scale accurate? Oh, I mean, yeah, sign maker. Well, like I said, if that, if that scales accurate, then you should go with a little ruler and figure out. I, I'm not, yes.
So you think, you, you feel like it needs more, well, if it's all?
You think it's going to go with more emphasis on those?
Well, I mean.
Maybe, maybe any?
Joy, what can we do to the sign photo wise?
I, I was out a long time ago because of exactly what you said.
If you were, what would you do to make it jump more, to make it more?
Well, and, and I, and I think it comes down to the, it, it comes down to the, Brenna, I didn't, sorry, I would blame him up there. It's, do you want a sign that supersedes the town and that is a town tone, or do you want a sign that is all about state championships? And I don't think you can get both of those. You have to have one of them that is clear to the overall. And that, that is where you're going to fall into somebody's mind of that.
And if you go into Sellersburg and you drive down like you're going towards.
This is way nicer than the other part.
The, like strictly, you can't see all of the Silver Creeks championships because they're all so small. So.
And we're going to do that as a town, not a school.
Correct.
The school isn't really, hasn't really done anything, even with the girl volleyball championship. I bought that sign and put it up myself down there for the fall. But the school didn't help this.
So, I mean, it's, it's a tough situation.
Another reason I pulled out, like. There's no win for you.
It, it, it is an absolute no win for it. You got, I mean, you tell me, it is an over.
I mean, it's just going to piss a bunch of girls off.
Now, what's going to happen is, is everybody that's out of town that comes through is going to talk about my great.
Right.
When everybody in town is, is not the guy.
You're right. I mean, I think it's.
I like what Brenna's done, honestly, dude. Only thing that I had pointed out was that blue, green, yellow logo is not meant.
Right, that's what I mean. If we're going to go towards the school colors, then the strawberry is the best.
And strawberry also pairs, pairs well with, with what you put at top, home with the Star Valley Strawberry Festival.
Yes, that was hers.
Great job, Faith. So my, my vision that I originally had, that I've never shared, and I'm still not sharing, was, was that it would have been maybe just a little bit different. A, a larger box, maybe give a little bit more of, I don't know if that's something that can be. Well. And, and it still doesn't take away from the town, or maybe, maybe that makes somebody a little bit happier. I don't know.
Well, if, if Borden can, I mean, like you say, you're looking at scale, that may be twenty inches tall of Borden's. But if that was sixteen.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
And then we come up and make those a few more inches and we keep things kind of paired. That, 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 that may work out better. And in that way, we hopefully meet over.
Who's making the sign?
Amtech.
To me, that's a, to me, just a guess, that's a four fifth. I'm going to say four fifths, one, one fifth, one A state champion. But I'm going to say maybe you go two-thirds. So you're, you're third, the top two thirds is the town. May, maybe that'd be different revision for that.
No, that is still, I, I would.
Are you working with Lacy, Brenna, my friend? Are you working with Lacy?
I don't know who I'm working with. Yeah, it might be Lacy.
I mean, you might just ask her to see if she can scale it to that, and we're going to blame her for it.
No, you're not. That's my granddaughter.
Really, really, if you keep the state just like it is in the very good. You're loving the board, the stab, we build a little bit smaller in your home. Matter of fact, your strawberries would probably stay the same size. Coming down to the active, like. The bonds.
Correct.
Again, again, you know, not right, not the right acres. Well, Joey the sign maker said.
So I'm just waiting on a uh, like a quote. So I don't know what the quote's going to be.
Quick question, this is something I thought of, and I think you'll maybe, maybe talked about this before, but if and hopefully when um, basketball, softball win another state championship, how does, how does that work?
That's vinyl down at the bottom, so you would just shift two thousand thirteen, sixteen, whatever it is, over and add the new date.
Oh, cool.
Mm-hmm.
That's good.
And that was representatives from the school came down and met with us, and that's what they suggested too, was just to put the championship and then add the dates.
So Toby and them like this? Did Toby and them like?
Yeah, I mean, well, Toby, yes, I talked to him, but a representative.
Nobody wants to know who the candidate. I mean, we, we would want to, like I said, we invited him in, Toby and Matt, so.
I mean, and suggestions was made on that end that, you know, you do, and to do the separate and just add dates, because that's what other towns do.
Well.
That do it.
When it comes down to it, we're paying the bill. And it's a town sign ultimately, so we're trying to mesh in. We take almost two, uh, two feet of the six foot sign and make it about the school. That's all I'm thinking. I mean, I think that's a good representative amount of sign. I mean, the signs that are down there are.
And they three by four or five or something?
So if you drill lots wider, you can bring that up, I mean.
Well, and we were just trying to make it readable, so that when you drive by, you can read it. But.
I, that's my suggestion.
Well, I can ask her to adjust and send it out.
And, and that's based on you got, you got them saying that everybody's like, that's what I would do. They skate back to me and say, hey, we love the town, but we want a little bit more of the school farm, and that's what I would go along with.
Okay, the voluntary annexation, that's Matt, but I printed out everything for you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, it, it looks like it's all in order here. Um, one thing I will note, and, and so we can, for voluntary annexation, we can just do it then, but we're going to need to have two separate public hearings, uh, that we'll need to open and close. Um, I'm assuming there won't be a lot of public comment, but um, so we'll, we'll want to do the two public hearings, open and close those. And then we'll, if we can um, adopt uh, the voluntary annexation ordinances on first reading only.
Well, if we do the opening, then you want to do this way, right? Do like normal and just do.
Hmm.
Do that, there's like meetings on both of those right after that, before you get, after you get, does that make sense?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I know a lot of my clients do that, where they kind of knock out the public hearing towards the beginning, so that should be fine, so.
Well, again, but respond to you. Kind of guide us through that process, so we want to guess through it.
Oh, absolutely. Do, do we want to talk at all about the um, two items you mentioned in your email?
Yeah, yeah, sure. I don't know, Faith, do you have any opportunity to work with Baker Tilly or anybody for that fiscal planning?
No, um, and I have, um, I've talked to other municipalities and they're not necessarily fans of Baker Tilly. Um, because they're super duper expensive. Um, but I mean, if that's who you guys want to reach out to, I mean, I can, I have contact information.
No, it's by my email, with my opinion, with Matt, he's got other contacts, people who do the same business.
Yeah, I do. I mean, there's.
I would just pick another, or, or get some quotes.
Yeah, I mean, there, you know, I would say, and I would agree with that, Baker Tilly is probably the most expensive. They're probably also the, I, I would say probably the most widely used across the state, but um, we use, we've worked with several other municipal advisors. Um, I've not had the best luck with Crow. Uh, Crow's been um, very slow.
Crow's been saving for the county's users for all their audits.
Yes, so, um, so, so Crow, you know, as municipal advisor, some of my local clients use Bondry. Um, they're based out of Carmel, but they would probably be cheaper um, with Baker Tilly. Um, those are REEDY Financial. I know a couple of my clients, um, cities they all use is REEDY for some stuff, so. Uh, you know, happy to give you any kind of contacts, uh, if you'd like any of those.
Well, you can send, I mean, I'll get contact information on the last two, on REEDY and um, the one in Carmel. Um, because I just, I, I have not heard, and I, I mean, I hate to say it, but I just, I have not heard good things about Baker Tilly, and they are super duper expensive.
Yeah, and, and again, like, one of my big concerns was Baker Tilly did a, like a fiscal report for like a, another client of mine, that's long ago. And they took such a long time. I'm like, oh my gosh. So I, I'll send you, I'll send you Bondry and, and the E's topic.
I'm an engineer, I just talked with Dick Brock. David's happy to, bored of, but I think he's home now.
Home, yes.
Okay, and he said he has things to get through, and he'd like to call in for the next month, sometime this week, and let me know if he's down town or not.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I mean, I mean, that's really the big, the big thing. We don't worry about it for purposes of tonight, but just before the council next month finally adopts the ordinances, it's a good idea to just verify that uh, the new annex territory is, is at least one eighth or twelve point five percent uh, contiguous with the town's current boundaries, so. And so it shouldn't take David too long to do that, I don't think, so.
When I, when I said the word, you said there's no problem. Brad, you said that with a heat piece, with the church to go along with me, so I can get my identification. Put the good connection there, and so with that connection, and with the town property, and then with the school. Uh, there's property, is there anything yet from Buddy Fork?
Nope, still waiting.
Okay, so. Right, I mean.
But they don't have like monthly meetings, so.
Yeah.
I, I assume with Buddy Fork, it's not that pressing to annex them, because like, it's obviously like, they're not going to be bringing property taxes into the town's coffers.
Well, unless they do something on that property. Well, unless they do something on that property, it's really.
Mm-hmm.
Well, part of the property, if they leave the wealth, it's gonna be a problem anyway. Right. Anyway, so we got both of those points.
Do you, do we need to respond in Norman's summer prior to the meeting so that we already have it?
Um, yes, I I'd recommend that. And and one thing I'd also recommend, just to keep the ball rolling on annexation, is I think the council should make a motion authorizing Faith to hire a municipal advisor to do the um, the fiscal reports for the annexations. That way um, um, that way we don't have to wait till January to get approval for that, so. Cause they're they're probably gonna want, um, they're probably gonna want Faith to just run for the town this time, like a um, engagement letter or something, so.
You guys wanna put this down for your ordinance number so you have it when you're making your motion? It's gonna be just a 2025 dash twelve dash on. But that's your your ordinance number that's in the packet.
And your twelve dash what?
Two oh two oh, love, two oh two five dash twelve dash nine.
It's and so for the annexation ordinances, will one of them be the two thousand twenty five dash twelve dash oh nine A, and then the other one B? Cause there's two different annexation ordinances.
No, you have another one. It's just that the documentation. Just keep on going. Another staple.
So that's.
Yeah, we can do one of them with an A and one of them with a B.
Okay. Yeah, we just wanna make sure we we know which one's which.
Yeah. Yeah, and then that's all we have.
Um, might as well do it then.
Which one don't you have, Faith? Here, I'll just give both of them.
I have the one that has and. I didn't have the twenty October twentieth one. I had the twenty first one.
Wait a minute, I'm trying to remember, like, I think I had it labeled, maybe on my emails, but like, for, cause like, I'm trying to like keep annexations straight, like.
Right.
Ordances, I've tried to like, you know, have one labeled section one, one labeled section two. Um, is the, is the Ruckman, Cutter, Church one, the one that's, I've been calling one, and then the school offering?
I think so, because that was the joint, because it was one, and then the second one was just a school.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, one is the one.
So the joint one is the one I labeled B, and the other one is the one I labeled A.
Okay.
So if that matters, the one that's just for this tool is A, and then the one for, you know, you want an A and.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we'll still do, after the swearing in, we'll do the two public hearings.
Public hearing thing.
Okay.
For then, voluntary annexation, our sprint stock, this confirmation.
Okay, so Old State Bank, Jeff and I are getting ready to launch the Creighton Places fundraiser for the bank, and then Jill Segester and I are working on what the next step is for the B O T, because we've already got our committee established, which is David Ruckman, Steve, and Rick Cutter. And then Bradyus has paid, or will be paid by the end of the month, our total thirty seven thousand for all the engineering design. And then there was a twenty five hundred dollar bill that was, I forget what that was from.
That was for the.
Yes, yeah, so it's like a total thirty nine thousand something that Bradyus is taking care of for us.
Quick question on the B O T, um, has the, I can't remember from the last meeting, has the council like officially made a motion to appoint people to the committee? Okay, cause I I know, I know the council.
It has not, no, no.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Cause like, I know like the five twenty three adoption resolution was passed by the town, but I would, yeah, if 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 y'all are comfortable with who's on the committee, then I'd recommend that you all go ahead and just formally appoint today to the committee, so.
And I'm assuming you can talk with Rick and David about it.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so we need a motion on that too.
Light up Borden, everybody loves the lights. Get texts every day about all the lights down at the park and everything. They like, they love the the colorful hoops and the bridge, I mean, just, yeah, everybody likes it this year, including Matt. And then group insurance, still working on that, getting everybody's information. Um, Troy Cook's sign, we know that it was bent down at the park. The park board's been working on this.
Then they knew what they were proposing, Christian Lee sometimes been used on the park board, the council was speaking to the siblings. And what they like to do, I'm gonna say this, is put Troy's sign at the top of the park rules sign, so it keeps it all fluent and looks like the rest of everything else. And that's what the siblings would like to do.
So just to keep you guys in the loop. Yeah. I guess, no, no, it wouldn't.
No, it's got red block, um, and the Samtech care department. But the rest of the rest of it's red block and white. Yeah, it wouldn't do much, yeah.
I wouldn't wanna mess with theirs, but the whole thing is, we decided we wanna be uniform down there, but if they got logo, if they support it, I I.
Yeah, that's part of the.
Right, yeah, I mean, the the Friends of the Park holds money from Samtech that still uh, takes care of the the uh, yeah, the nets and all that kind of stuff and the signs. And they figured that somebody couldn't go up and just twist it like that, and if it was cohesive and just in a sign with everything else. Yeah, just like the, yeah. So the park board's still in discussion. They'll have to make a motion at their meeting. Um, Lamaflex ribbon cutting tomorrow at four. Uh, sensory walk, we've got all the funding for it. It should be, the panel should be delivered, I I think it's the seventeenth, eighteenth, or nineteenth, I'm still working on that, but it's all been ordered. Ready one point O funding, um, talked to Tom Malia today. He would like to know, once we get approval of the draft letter that's being sent to the R D A for, you know, to send out for uh, uh, bids, what companies you guys would like for us to send them to. And I know Temple and Temple's one of them that we had talked about, because they'd given us the estimates and stuff on the project, so. I don't know if you guys wanna still do Temple and Temple and two others. We need to at least send them to three.
I know one company you're not gonna send to.
Um, you know, there are different aspects of that. So I don't know that we're sending it to one anywhere else, or if we want one to run sewer line, water lines in, and do quote the P A bean, and quote the bathroom.
Well, they would quote it all. I don't know if they like, contract out certain aspects of it, I don't know. Usually that's what.
But I know we got a really cheap quote from, he come help us on the sewer.
Chris Lawson.
Chris Lawson, yeah, so I mean.
I can ask him if we can do that. I don't know. He had mentioned Matt Construction too.
Matt Construction, Matt only wants to quote it.
Okay.
Contact anyone to quote or say anything. I don't, I don't know.
No, no, he had a couple that he said that he would email me and send me suggestions to, so, yeah. And I'll call each, everybody and let them know.
What about the fellas? Girds again?
Guy, yeah.
Rick had brought him. Involved, I think, at least not.
Well, I mean, we can send out a, you know, blind copy email and just send it all out and see who who bites.
We have to run it through paper, right?
No, it's under two hundred fifty thousand. That's why we can send emails. Um, South Monon Trail, so we, Sadie, Meskaff, and I put in for a grant with the Metta Grant for security cameras and everything around the building, and so uh, we should find out February twenty sixth of twenty twenty six about that.
What was the day I'm sorry?
I believe it's, it might be February twenty, no, it'd be twenty sixth of twenty twenty six.
Twenty sixth, twenty sixth.
Yeah. Parker erosion, still waiting to hear back from D N R. I sent out a couple emails, haven't heard anything. And then the last thing is hometown support letter they wanna put, and I think I put it in you guys's. So they they just, they wanna put a new awning, and they wanted a support letter. So I created a support letter. If you guys wanna sign off on it, that way you help them at zoning. And that's it. No, because I didn't know if that should be you and I or Leanne, because Leanne is the representative off the town council. Okay.
Somehow she just got my information. She said she wasn't digging your work or anyone else's. She just got mine. I'm fine if both both in, that's fine.
Okay, is that okay? We meet with River Hills, you and I. Yeah.
We can volunteer for that.
Yeah.
So real quick on that, on our meeting on the eighteenth, seeing how somebody's gonna be going up there, do you wanna do that morning if there's a council thinking? Whoever can go, go up there. In our local.
Yes, we've gotten all the information. I updated it at the sync.
Send out an email about update on the fire district, I don't know, it sounds like it's a big stall, but I haven't heard anything since the third, October, right? So Ruben got paid, but he's not in.
Ruben Cummings? Yeah, no, Ruben.
What else, guys, anything else to talk about?
Uh, financial business? Oh. Yeah, that's all.
Hey, how are you? Hi, actually, hi. Um, so I have been working with Waze and B S and A, which is now St. Anthony, and um, we actually have a tape for our film live for online. So, yes, and I've already talked to the um, Jefferson County, and they're gonna have this huge festival called Thunder Over Louisville to celebrate. It was April thirteenth, that's our, our lucky.
Good job, Faith.